Monique did say she was coming, right?
I'm not aware of her.
Okay. I didn't see anything. Usually she sends it to everyone, so.
We should have a new winner attending soon as well.
Oh, great.
Yes.
From planning?
From planning. Dave Preamo.
Okay.
Is that your understanding, Tim?
Yes. Yeah. We were trying to get here tonight. We had a little snafu with getting the oath issued.
All right.
So we'll have them for next month.
Awesome. That's good news. I like to hear that. This will be a full board. Now we can get a couple of alternates. So in case the
I think I have a line on one of those.
Summertime plans come up. Think you have a line on one or two?
I do.
Perfect. I like to hear it.
You're not starting harassing my friends and telling them I need to borrow them once every other month or so.
I'm fine with you harassing your friends. That works. It's good to have a good, solid debate and enough people to have that debate.
Yep, I agree.
Asking a friend to join ZBIA is a little bit like asking friends to help you move a piano.
[laughing]
Well, that's the thing. I feel like I've helped them move enough times.
Yeah.
If they know what it is.
Yeah, we finally got to the point this last time. We're hiring movers. We're done.
Yeah, agreed.
Too much stuff to ask friends.
Completely.
Sign of maturity.
That's adulthood right there. When you stop offering pizza and beer to help you move.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. I had a lot of those days in my twenties and thirties, I will say. Well, I think I'm going to go ahead and get started. She enjoy us when she gets here. Does that sound?
Absolutely.
Solid plan? Okay. Well, on that note, good evening and welcome to the Charter Township Meridian zoning board of appeals meeting. Today is, oh my gosh, I almost forgot the date. My husband will kill me because it's his birthday. It's May 18th, 2022, and the time is 6:32. We are still waiting for one member to join us, but we're going to get started right away with our approval of tonight's agenda. Everybody got a chance to look that over? Looking.
I move the agenda to be approved as presented.
All right. All right. So moved by Member DeShane and supported by Member Koenig. We will go to a roll call vote. Member Koenig.
Yes.
And Member DeShane.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the agenda is approved. Next item would be the correction approval and ratification minutes from Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. Hopefully, everybody gets a chance to look that over. I think our minute did a very good job recording all of the madness that happened at the last meeting. So I just want to take a second to say how much I appreciated the succinctness of the minutes as opposed to what all back and forth occurred. But I do appreciate that was a difficult meeting to write minutes for, difficult meeting to sit through. So any motion on the minutes and any or any corrections that need to be made. I did not see any myself, so, okay. All right. Well, I move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, April 20th.
Support.
Supported by Member DeShane on a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Member Koenig.
Yes.
And Member DeShane.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the minutes are approved from April 20th. Next up on our agenda is communications. I have a singular letter pertaining to ZBIA case number 22-04-20-2 from Jerry Fedewa, and I would just like to ask Director Schmidt if he would like to give us some little update on that situation.
Just briefly, the applicant has withdrawn their request because under the new ordinance that the township board has adopted, they believe that they can build what they're looking to build without needing a variance. So functionally, the ordinance is working exactly the way we hoped it would, that it would stop variance requests, basically.
Perfect. And what is the new ordinance state or what is it that hopefully will help us a little bit more with that Lake Lansing overly district?
So it eliminated the difference between houses that fronted on a sort of a side street versus houses that fronted on one of the main streets of Lake Drive, Hazlet. I can't remember the other one because it's a strike through in my mind instead of actually being an ordinance. And changed it to there's one standard. It's 20 feet. Alternatively, if you're in an area where within 150 feet of your property, the setbacks are less, the average setback is less, you can use that average setback.
Okay.
Now, I can already tell you, we've already found at least one quirk in it that
Right.
because what we were aiming towards was the actual main structure, not detached garages.
Trashed structures.
And so that is already, but we think that's the intent, and so there still might be one or two floating around that have come here. But by and large, people are going to have a lot more flexibility now.
Fantastic. All right. Good to hear. I love that that's
Final question. Did Mr. Fedewa meet with staff before he withdrew?
He did.
Okay.
A couple of times.
Staff incurred that the new ordinance does eliminate his need for a ZBIA case.
I would not say that. We told him he needs to provide us with the information that shows he does not need it. He is confident that once he gets the information, he will show he does not need it.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update. I think we were all kind of curious as to how that was going to play out, so I appreciate that very much, which is great because we have no unfinished business. Like to hear that, too, so we can go right into new business. And that begins with ZBIA case number 22-05-18-1. That's 4660 South Haggadorn Road, Johnson Sign Company. And I will turn it over to Director Schmidt.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to just use the podium here for a second. Sorry, Sam on the camera. This is the building we're talking about located on Haggadorn Road. I'm showing this specifically to start, just so you can get a perspective of what was there, because this is obviously not the case right now. The Wells Fargo sign is gone. But I wanted you to see this specifically because this side, which faces the road, has no signage, and this side, which faces Haggadorn, has all the signage. And so that is what has been previously approved for this building. MSU health sign on the far northern end, in the middle, the id signs, and on the southern end, the Wells Fargo advisor sign. So by way of background, the id signs were the first signs installed. At the time of their installation, they were legal signs. They were permitted by ordinance by right, and at the time, it totaled 93 square feet. The ordinance changed subsequently and substantially limited the amount of wall sign that you can get. It also changed the way we measure signs. So that's the discrepancy you see or the difference you see in the first paragraph between the 93 and the 185. In total, if you were to put one giant box around that id sign, which is how we would traditionally do it now, because of all the dead space to fill out that box, it is 185 square foot sign. But by the way it was done at the time, as a legal sign, it's 93 square feet. So subsequent to that, there was a request to add 65 square feet for the Wells Fargo sign, and subsequent to that, there was a request to add 65 feet for the MSU sign, both in other variance cases previously. There's 155 feet and a half feet of frontage on this side of the building, 155 feet of frontage on, I believe, on the other side of the building as well. I believe it's a square building if I remember correctly. So what is the request in front of you this evening is the Wells Fargo sign has been removed. As you can see in the applicant's the proposed rendering you see here, and I'll zoom in on that a little bit more. So what is in front of you this evening is two requests essentially. The id sign will remain. They'd like to replace the MSU healthcare sign, the upper, the northern corner of the building, and add the pharmacy sign on the first floor. So previously, there were three signs on this building. They are proposing to still go to three signs. The square footage is now a little bit different. In total, you would have three signs on the west side with a total of 303.8 square feet, which is, if permitted under the ordinance, that is essentially two to one ratio of the size of the building to the size of the sign. So it's two requests in front of you this evening, the total size of the signs and the total number of the signs. The applicant is here this evening to speak further to the request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions should they arise.
Thank you so much, Director Schmidt. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up to the podium and speak on the case? And sir, if you can just give us your name and your address just for the public record, that would be fantastic.
All right. My name is Jim Johnson with Johnson Sign Company. Address is 2240 Lansing Avenue, Jackson, Michigan. And this is Melissa. I'm with MSU Healthcare. I'm going to just start off real quick and kind of give a rundown from our perspective, and then I'll pass it over to Melissa to also talk. And thank you for the thorough start because that took away a lot of my notes. So thanks a lot for doing that. So as you can see, what we're asking for is in, from the original variance that allowed 223 square foot, we're asking for an additional 80.8 square foot, which would bring up the total square footage to 303.8. As you can see, based on our drawings, the new MSU healthcare sign is roughly 210 square feet. The pharmacy sign is 39.8 square feet. So the majority of this request and what we're going to be talking about is the importance of the size and how we kind of came up with it. The reason we're requesting this size is because of the unique circumstances to this building. This building is a six-foot or a six-story building that sits roughly 300 foot back off of Haggadorn. One of the reasons we're requesting the MSU healthcare sign larger than what it currently was is because of the way the existing MSU sign reads on the building. If you had a chance to look at it in person, you can kind of see that a lot of the letters are really small and you can't read the Michigan State University letters. So what we did is we took a step back and looked at the sign, and before the logo had damage, there was an S Spartan badge up there. And so that measures roughly 39 inches, and that's kind of what you can see the best and the most clear from Haggadorn was that S emblem. So what we came up with is trying to capture the letters for MSU healthcare in a similar size so that you can read it really well from Haggadorn Road. And so the new proposed sign that we have, the MSU letters measure 34 inches in height. And the, and like I said, the old S logo was roughly 39 inches. So it's close in size to the old sign, which was the best part of the visibility. And kind of what they mentioned earlier is one of the biggest reasons the square footage for this sign appears to be so large is because we have to box in the sign. So the way the code reads is you got to take the entire overall height, overall width of the sign. So the Spartan head logo is five foot. So all the dead space above the letters and below the letters are counted towards the square foot. If you were able to remove the dead space and only count the Spartan badge in the letters, the square footage is roughly 66 square feet less in size. And the way we came up with that is the Spartan logo is a 60 by 56 inch logo, which is 23 square foot, and the letter area is 34 inches by 346 inches, which would be 82 square foot. So just for clarity, kind of that's why the square footage appears to be so big, but like I just mentioned, 66 square foot of that actually is just wall area that does not have any sign on it. And the last thing I just wanted to briefly touch base on, we tried to come up with the letters because after we did the last set back in 2015, one thing we noticed was how they shrunk pretty good on the building when you stepped back and looked at it. And so for this one, we took a study and said, there's a California Institute of Technology that came out with a letter study. And so they recommend from 300 foot back, the maximum benefit to a letter is 30 inches. So the lowercase letters are roughly 26 inches and the uppercase are roughly 34. So we kind of came with that happy medium in between them to try to have this sign be the best use from that distance. And in closing, we feel that the total square footage we're asking is in line with the building and what it's allowed. Because they have two frontages, they, you know, I think technically, and I could be off base, but I think they get 155 square foot for the front and 155 for the back, which would be roughly 310 square foot. The total square footage we're asking for is 303, so it's under the total square footage allowed for the building. However, because of the way the building's set back, it wouldn't make sense for them to put it on the side. That's why they're asking for it on the front of the building because you can't really see the side of the building good from Haggadorn. So those are the main reasons we came up with the design with the size that this new logo lays out to. And if you have any questions for me as far as how the sign's made, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm going to let Melissa speak a little bit on the importance of this from her perspective.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If you just want to come up and state your name and address for the public record, please?
Yes, Melissa Jagla, 2836 Montego Drive, Lansing, Michigan.
Hi, welcome.
Well, thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. As MSU Healthcare, formerly MSU Health Team, is a healthcare provider. So from our perspective, when people come and seek care, we have, you know, mothers, we may have caregivers taking care of elderly, other individuals in their family, and being able to navigate to the building and recognize where they're at with all those distractions of a health event is really important to us. And I would say it's important to all of you from a public safety standpoint as well because we want to make sure that people can get to a point of care safely. As I worked with Mr. Johnson on this, what we came to was to be able to identify, okay, this is the right building, putting MSU Healthcare really large toward the top would be good from a distance. We have many clinics in this building. We have clinics on floors two, four, five, and six. We added a pharmacy on floor one, and we will be adding a lab draw service soon. So we do have quite a bit of business in here. The reason that we proposed putting pharmacy between the first and second floor was to allow people to understand that, okay, I'm at MSU Healthcare, and then as they get soon closer to the building, they can see the additional information of pharmacy and not cluttering up that top sign area. So again, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Go green.
Sounds good. Go white. All right. Thanks, Ms. Jagla. All right. On that note, if there's no one else that would like to speak on this case tonight, we will get into our board time. All right. Board time it is. Anybody have any questions for either of our applicants? Or we can just start right into
I had one question for staff.
Yep, go for it.
And then I had a couple of other things, so I guess I could start.
Yeah, Member Koenig, go ahead.
Thank you. Director Schmidt, I guess it really doesn't matter, to be honest, because it looks like the property has road frontage on all four sides. Is that correct?
It does, actually.
So was there considered, any side of this building considered to be a rear facade? I mean, it really doesn't matter, let's be honest. I'm looking at the code. I just wanted to ask for some clarity.
You know, I think, I suspect that if I go back to the original approval for this, they made a determination that Haggadorn was the frontage. But you're right, under the zoning ordinance, this is technically a quadruple-fronted lot. And they're all fronts.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. I kind of assumed. I just wanted to ask a question, put it on the record. When I went through this, you know, I saw there was a lot of numbers. And thank you, Director, for clarifying because that was the first thing I saw was, wait a minute, this sentence says 93 square feet, but this one down here basically doubles it to 185.
Right.
So what's the correct number? Now I understand, so I appreciate that. So if I have this correct, the permitted amount, square footage, I'm just going by square footage now, the permitted amount is 155.5, and that's based on the part of the code that says one square foot per one linear foot of the building, linear, linear foot of the building that was measured. And the existing is 158, and that's based on the existing signs that are there now, including the id sign that was one of the first signs. The proposed is a total of 303.8, and that includes the 210.8 of the new MSU signs and the existing height sign, correct?
Correct.
If I read this correctly, and I went back and looked at the code as well, the applicant said, in addition to what was in the staff report of this memo, that right now, the regulations allow the applicant to have the single wall sign on the building's west elevation, which is considered, like you said, potentially the front of 155, but also they could have another sign. They could have a second sign based on Part 3A of the code up to another 155.5. So if you do the math, as the applicant said, that's about 311 feet. And the three signs they're coming in is 303.8. So to me, the issue isn't really, I don't have an issue with the size of the signs, the square footage. Issue more to me is the number of signs, is obviously the code says you can only have one sign and potentially two. Can't have one on the rear, but you can't have two on the same wall. However, the big thing I noticed is that there was already three signs to begin with. So to me, I don't see this as necessarily willing to penalize the applicant coming in, asking for a variance, they have three signs when there technically already was there three there now. Or there was three in the past, let's put it that way. So I don't personally have an issue with this. I don't think the impacts are going to be that great anyways. I understand the need to make the letters big enough so you can see it because I, you know, I go to Pizza House, I drive by there and look at those signs sometimes, and it's it's crazy to look up and see some of that green and go, whoa, that's really funky at night. So I totally understand the size of the sign. You know, this is a commercial area. It's across the street from parking lot in Agfield. There's no residential houses near here, so I don't anticipate you having any issues with people driving by going, that's too bright, it's too big, it's causing nuisance. So therefore, I just wanted to state that I personally don't see much of an issue with this, to be honest.
Thank you, Member Koenig. You've said everything I was going to say, so there we go. It's good to be in agreement right off the bat. I couldn't agree more. I think that going from three signs to three signs is is kind of balanced and a minimum action, so I find that to be relatively easy to get behind. I do, I am curious, and I hope that there's a little bit more thought behind the pharmacy sign, if either one of you would like to talk about that. Is that close to an entrance where somebody would be going into the building to enter that pharmacy area? It seems a little more directional in that case.
Well, the pharmacy entrance is on
Yeah, yeah, please come up to the mic. That way we can get you on the minutes.
Yes. So the pharmacy entrance is, let's see, the south side.
Okay.
And where individuals enter the parking, typically, they will enter from the south side. But we wanted to make sure that as they approached and knew, I'm in the right area for MSU Healthcare's entities, and then as they got closer, they could see the pharmacy. So it's not exactly on the facade of the pharmacy.
The entry.
Entry.
Okay.
There's an entry on every side of the building.
Right, as they're saying, this is a four-sided building. Okay. Okay. Member Shane, do you have something to add?
I already, also, I think there are some unique circumstances into this ordinance, in part because we don't have any other five-story buildings, I believe, in the township. This is unique, and it is a very large building. I think our ordinance is likely written for one-story buildings, which is 99% of what our buildings are. Also, the id, I don't see that so much as a sign. Is it sort of their id logo up there? And yeah, we have to count it as a sign, but it, people, I think, generally have seen that enough that they ignore that, and they're going to go to those other two signs. So I really see it as allowing for two signs, and I have no problem with this trade-off either. So I intend to support this.
Okay. Well, on that note, let's take a look at our new variance. It'll be our very first time with our new variance criteria, so let's take them for a spin. Let's see. Criteria one, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I think as Member DeShane just pointed out, it is a very unique building in Meridian Township. Just being a six-story building and then being a four-sided building, it just has some unique properties that nothing else around it has, and not self-created. Criteria number two, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose. I do think that we've covered this and that we're pretty much at minimum action and neutral here, but that not having the signs is not only a public safety issue, but also would they be able to use the building? Sure. Would people be able to find them? No, not necessarily. So would that allow them to practice the permitted purpose? I would argue that it would not without the proper signage. So and I think, as Member Koenig pointed out, the fact that they could have signs on other sides of the building or choosing to use this as their frontage, I also think, you know, kind of lends itself to solving those practical difficulties of how to get people in the right spot, especially for a healthcare setting. Criteria number three, granting the variance is a minimum of action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. And I think both of my two fellow board members here covered that well, that we are replacing two signs with two very similar signs in size, and we're not exceeding the size of what would be permitted if you were doing one on one side of the building and one on the other side. So in that, I believe it is a minimum because it's actually under the square footage you would be at. So I think you've met that criteria very well. We do appreciate that because we have some people that go a little larger with signs, so that's appreciated. Criteria number four, granting the variance would not adversely affect adjacent land or essential character in the vicinity of the property. As Member Koenig pointed out, you're in a commercial area with no residential directly in front of you, with a college right across the street on a, you know, busy boulevarded road there, so I don't see that negatively affecting. If anything, it'll positively affect that people may not be getting in stop-and-go kind of traffic accidents trying to find their doctor's office. And criteria number five, granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and purposes and intent of this chapter. And I do think this is a case where our sign ordinance doesn't quite fit the mold for this particular type of building, so I do think it's consistent with the purposes and intent of this chapter. So with that said, I can meet all five criteria. Want to say that? Do I have a motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Member Koenig.
I move to approve ZBIA case number 22-05-18-1, Johnson Sign Company, 2240 Lansing Avenue, Jackson, Michigan, 49202. Support.
Okay. Moved by Member Koenig, supported by Member DeShane. We will go ahead with a vote unless we have any more discussion on that motion. Since it's just the three of us, I think we've covered everything. Member Koenig.
Yes.
And Member DeShane.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so your variance application has been approved. Thank you for coming tonight, folks, and good luck with your signs. Absolutely. All right. On that note, moving on to the next case, which will be flip through my packet here. ZBIA case number 2205-18-2, 1830 West Grand River. MAG, M-A-G, OKF, R-E-L-L-C, 1830 West Grand River Avenue. And I will turn it over to Director Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the request in front of you this evening is another one that has a long and mildly complicated sign history here, so if you'll indulge me for just a second.
All right.
Property is 1830 West Grand River
Property is 1830 West Grand River, current home to Maury, it is Maury's now, right?
Maury's Automotive.
Maury's Automotive Ford dealership. They currently have, and I believe they've provided some pictures in your packet, because this is one time Google Earth doesn't do us a great justice. You can see the courtesy sign for the previous owner and the blue oval sign that is indicative of Ford. So by way of history, this has had a number of variances as well. '98, they got their initial variance to allow the Ford logo and the campus signs, when it was Campus Ford, on, you know, the east and west wing of the south side of the building. So I'm going to focus on the south side of the building. There are other variances on other parts of the building that don't matter to this case, they've already been decided, they're not being changed. So what we're really focused on is the south side of the building. Eventually, those campus signs got replaced with courtesy signs that were functionally the same size when that got bought. An additional sign was granted in 2015 for modification of the courtesy sign and modification to the oval. And then the courtesy sign was replaced with Merrill in 2019. Now we are at Maury's Oakmas, Maury's is the current owner, and Ford corporate requires that you have the name of the community, I believe it's when you own multiple dealerships, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So they have to put Maury's Oakmas up now, in place of previously, it was just Merrill when they just owned one. And so functionally, the variance requested this evening is to put the word Oakmas up on the building. To clear this up going forward, for future Tim and future Keith, we are asking the ZBA to consider making a condition of this approval, that ZBA Case Number 22-05-18-2 is the controlling variance for approval of signs located on the south side of the building, located at 1830 West Grand River Avenue. So in the future, we could just go to this file, instead of having to pull five other ones to figure out what the history of this is. That's all we have at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate moment.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. Would the applicant or the applicant's representation like to come up to the podium and just state your name and address there for the public record, and anything you'd like to add?
Very good, thank you and good evening, my name's Lonnie Sibulinski, and I'm the managing partner at Maury's Oakmas Ford. And as Mr. Schmidt told you, we have a variance involved, and so it's pretty simple, actually, it's twofold for us. We requested because we want a little bit bigger sign, so it can be seen from the road, number one, and number two, we want to be part of the community, and we certainly feel like adding the name Oakmas after Maury's is doing that. And that really is the short and the long of it, so.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind staying right at the podium with us, so if we have to ask you any questions, you don't have to come back and forth?
Absolutely.
I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions. All right, and would anybody else like to speak on this case tonight? You good, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, we're just, we're doing the installation, so I just say, just get to that question.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, thank you so much. All right, any, Member DeShane, go ahead.
I think adding Oakmas is nice, good touch, with the community's name. Is it also a requirement of Ford now that your dealership says the name of the dealership and the community that it's located in?
Well, it is a requirement, because at the same time that Maury's Automotive Group purchased Merrill Ford, we also purchased Grand Ledge Ford.
Okay.
And so even though Merrill may have said that he didn't own two to get away from a certain variance, he did at the time.
Okay.
And so we put the new sign up in the Grand Ledge location, Maury's Grand Ledge, and so therefore, we also want to add, not just because Ford requires us, we would agree that we want it that way.
With all the turnovers you've had, are we comfortable that we're going to not see another name changed from this dealership anytime soon?
We're very comfortable.
Very good.
Maury's is a regional automotive group across Wisconsin, Minnesota, and now we've ventured into Michigan, with 22 dealerships throughout that entire organization. We also are in line to look to purchase more in the Michigan area.
Well, I think, Member DeShane asked my question, which was whether or not the Oakmas was required. I do see, so we're looking at a variance of 20.75 square feet for that additional Oakmas. Now, is the Maury's pretty much in line with the size that was Merrill? Is that kind of what we're looking at, the additional size differential is the Oakmas? And maybe Mr. Johnson knows that?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, you may help with that.
Come on up to the podium, please. This is Mr. Johnson from Johnson Sign Company, joining us again. We like when people are back for two cases in a row, it's very helpful, we get to know people.
Yeah, absolutely, I got the old, let me just find it real quick in my file, I believe there were 26-inch-high letters as well.
Okay. I'm just curious if the additional, you know, if the variance is literally the Oakmas, that would kind of just be my question for clarification.
Yeah, it's close, so the Merrill letters were 26-inch high by 17'4" wide, so they're really close, on this drawing, I don't have what the difference is between the two.
Okay.
But I would assume they're really close.
Okay. All right, yeah, it appears like that with the math, that must be about it, so.
The applicant, if I could say something, Mr. Chair?
Sure, Member Koenig.
Response to application review criteria number one does say that they're proposing a sign with 26-inch letters, and the city designation of a previous owner had a sign with 26-inch letters.
Okay.
So they're saying that it's the same size.
It's the same size, okay, great. All right, that helps, and it helps to read the packet, thank you.
There's a lot of information in there.
There is a lot of information, I didn't get, clearly you didn't get to that page, so I appreciate the homework by Member Koenig.
I just had to look myself, so.
All right, in that case, question answered. Does anybody else have any questions? I honestly will say, I don't see this as being a huge, a big variance, I do see it as being more minimal, I do, is the Oakmas extraneous, perhaps? Is it necessary? It sounds like from a branding purpose for Ford, it's necessary. However, it is a very, it's a small amount of a variance, in my estimation here, especially looking at, we're literally just tacking the Oakmas on and leaving the size the same size as what existed. So I don't have any large reservations for this, I do appreciate staff's note here that this will be the controlling variance, because this seemed like a pretty complicated thing to wade through, to get through all of these, to get to this, what we're looking at tonight for this presentation. So I definitely take that note into consideration. Yes, Member DeShane?
One more comment to the applicant, if you turn around, you'll see our township logo there, Meridian Township, and we've been trying to get the community to identify, not by the school district, which would be Oakmas, but by the township. Did you ever consider Maury's Meridian as your name?
Well, I can't answer that, because it was looked at by our corporate office in Minnesota.
Okay.
I really don't know whether or not they considered that at all.
Okay.
I think that the situation with Ford is controlling the Oakmas part.
It'd be even more of an ask from us, because there's a couple more letters there for one thing, but it does have a little bit of, it has alliteration to it, yeah, so that's something to be, just wanted to ask that question.
Something I can bring up.
Yeah. That's a very good question. I, yeah, I don't really see any more questions, unless either of you think of something that may hitch on our criteria here. But I'm curious too, for, Member DeShane, just as long as we're in our board time, if that's not something too, that we can work with, both economic development and planning, and really kind of talking with our businesses that come into the township, and talking about branding as Meridian Township versus Haslett Oakmas, what have you, because I know we have like the Haslett Marathon versus the, you know, this and that, so Villages of Oakmas, you know, I mean, it's a little slippery, right?
And it's hard to unwind those identifications that the community has with it. It does help with our new logo, because that's a logo you think, that's really cool.
Right, it's striking.
Our old one was that 1850's schoolhouse with the little flag sticking out of it, and you thought, boy, I don't want to have any association with that brand, if you will, but that new brand is exceptional.
Yeah. Good point, all right. Well, let's take a look at criteria. And I'll ask you both to chime in on these, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the lander structure, that are not so applicable to other lander structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. What do you think, gentlemen? Unique circumstances exist with their... I think that, just based on the research that staff had to do alone, there's some unique circumstances here on this property. Couple of times they've been before the ZBA here, so.
I would say definitely based on the requirement for Ford, but I also would have to say to take the message back to Ford, to good luck, because my guess is with this, if this is a true requirement, there's going to be multiple variances being requested all across the country at different dealerships.
All over the place, absolutely. And I do, I will point out that as long as we're talking about it, being content neutral is one thing, but also, you know, as far as the content of the signage, but that these go with the property. So if this changes from being a Ford dealership, this will still stay with the property. So I think it is important to kind of keep that in our head when we're looking at some of these signages. You know, I think for the previous case, we can all argue that that could have been, for whatever purpose, you know, residing in that building, but this one, you know, it's pretty particular to car dealership.
Mm-hmm.
So it will go with it if it changes, you know, from being a Ford dealership. So we will just keep that in mind, kind of, when we look at our sign ordinances here and sign cases. But that said, I think we can all agree that that was a unique for this particular building. And criteria number two, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. We talked about this in the previous case, but the name of the business is important to have for the permitted purpose. The Ford everywhere is very well-branded, but considering we're only talking about the south elevation, we're only talking about this particular sign, I do think that it's important to have the business name as part of the permitted purpose for that particular location, so I can meet that criteria. Criteria number three, granting the variance is the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. And we are back to what I would point out as being a 20.75 square foot additional request. So I can say that, in the grand scheme of things, that feels very, like a minimum action to me, and I don't feel that's an overreach. Criteria number four, granting the variance will not adversely affect land or essential character in the vicinity of the property, and considering that is car dealership row, I think you're in good company there.
Three in a row.
Yeah, right, bam, 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 we know where to go for a car on that stretch of Grand River, if we can get there.
Well, you should call it.
Sorry, nothing new.
It's Dealer Row North, because now it's separate Dealer Row down on Jolly Road.
On Jolly Road, yep. And criteria number five, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And again, I can very easily meet that criteria. So with that being said, do we have any more discussion on the criteria or on the case? If not, I make a motion to approve ZBA Case Number 22-05-18-2, with the condition that this is the controlling variance approval for all signs located on the south facade of the building located at 1830 West Grand River Avenue.
Support.
Okay, supported by Member DeShane. And any discussion on either the motion or the addition? The condition, I should say, not the addition. All right, then we'll go to a vote, Member Koenig.
Yes.
And Member DeShane.
Yep.
And the chair votes yes, so your variance has passed. Thank you very much, sir, good luck in Oakmas, Meridian Township, I should say.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, have a great day.
We're glad you're here.
All right. In that case, it looks like, let's see where we're at here on our agenda, if I can get to the top again. We have no other business, so I will open the floor for public remarks. And since it's just us, I will close the floor for public remarks and open the floor for board member comments, if there's any board member comments tonight.
You couldn't find two more different meetings than the past two meetings of this board?
Absolutely, and thank you for a couple signage questions.
And you've handled them both extremely well.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, I liked the challenge, and I enjoy the respite of it.
You sure had one last meeting.
Well, on that note, I will close, board member comments, and this meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.